Good afternoon, Chairman.
Thank you, Emily. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to today's virtual meeting in the Lincolnshire Schools Forum on 20th of April 2023 at 1:30. My name is Josh Greaves. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Forum, and I'll be chairing the meeting today as the Chairman Gavin Booth sent his apologies. Before we make a start, there are a few matters of procedure to mention. Today's proceedings will be audio broadcasted and recorded. When invited to speak by the Chairman, members and officers should unmute the microphones and switch on their video. When the member or officer has finished speaking, they should mute their microphone and switch off the video. If during the debate, a member or officer would like to ask a further question or raise a point, they're requested to use the chat function and simply write 'speak' as a comment. Members are politely requested to indicate using the chat function if they are leaving the meeting. And if members lose connection during the meeting, it's recommended that they end the call using the red phone icon and rejoin via the meeting link provided. Finally, if the Chairman is made aware that the meeting is not accessible to the public through remote means, or that members of the Forum have lost their connection due to any technological or other failure provision, the Chair shall adjourn the meeting immediately for five minutes to allow all members time to log in. So with that being said, can I please ask you, Emily, to confirm the presence of all members and officers in attendance at today's meeting?
Thank you, Chairman. Amy Stanser, Kina Atkins, Alan Howe.
Present, hello, from sunny Sutton-on-Sea.
Good afternoon. Tony Stephens, Catherine Stratton.
Present.
Michelle Anderson.
Present.
Rachel Barrett.
I'm here.
Joe Schlesser.
Present. Good afternoon.
Professor Ken Durans.
Present.
Thank you. Stephen Baraguanis, Simon Pickett.
Present.
Josh Greaves.
Present.
Andy Watts. Julia Merivale.
Present.
Heather Marks. We should also have the following officers in attendance today. Mark Popperwell, Strategic Finance Lead, Children's Services. Elizabeth Bowles, Strategic Finance Manager, Schools Finance Team. Geraldine Wilders, Head of Service for School Strategy, Children's Education. Martin Smith, Assistant Director for Children's Education. Tony Warnock, Head of Financial Services. Eileen McMorro, Programme Manager, Children's SEND. And I think that's it. Is there anybody whose name I haven't called that's here? That's it then. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you again, Emily, and thank you all for your time today. So Agenda Item One then is apologies for absence replacement members. Emily, have we received any apologies?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from Gavin Booth, Katie Gravel, Simon Morley, Leah Mason, Dr Stephen Hopkins, and Peter Tomlinson. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd also like to add some comments of gratitude before we make a further start. Unfortunately, Frances Green has had to resign from her position as a Forum member, and we thank her for her contributions that she's made to the Forum. Secondly, I'd like to thank Tony Warnock, Financial Services Manager, who's soon to be leaving the Council after many years of service. Throughout Tony's time at the Council, he has made a very significant contribution to the Forum, to school funding matters, all for the benefit of Lincolnshire Schools and so many children and young people. So on the Forum's behalf, I'd like to wish Tony the very best for the future. And I understand he's got a few exciting things planned. So thank you, Tony. Agenda Item Two then, declarations of members' interests. Do members have any interests they wish to declare? And if so, can you please type 'speak' in the chat function? I'm not seeing anything, Emily, unless you have.
No, nothing.
Thank you for that. Thank you. So moving on then to Agenda Item Three, minutes of the Schools Forum meeting held 19th of January 2023, and that's at pages seven to twelve in the Consolidated Pact. And I would like to propose the minutes as a correct record. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Julia.
Thank you, Julia. It's therefore proposed and seconded that the minutes be approved. Do we have anyone present wishing to abstain? Or do we have anyone against?
Nobody's indicated, Chairman.
In which case, that proposition will be carried. Thank you very much. We're making good progress here, colleagues. It's not particularly long agenda today, so we'll give our full time and attention now to the next three items. So Agenda Item Number Four, a meaty one for us, Building Communities of Specialist Provision Strategy, an update, and that's at pages thirteen to twenty-eight. And it's my pleasure to invite Eileen McMorro, Programme Manager, Children's SEND, to present, so.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Forum members, for the opportunity to join you today to update on the Building Communities of Specialist Provision Strategy, Year Four. You will, I assume, all be very well versed on the strategy by now, as this is our fourth update, and we're starting to come towards the end of implementation, which is very exciting. The report you've received obviously covers the progress made within both the capital element of the programme and the wraparound education support services. So I'll start with the capital element of the programme. So within the reporting period, the key milestones which have been met can be seen on Section 2.2, and they include both the official opening for both Boston Endeavour and Bourne Willoughby Academy, the completion of the new block and remodelling of existing facilities for the Spilsby-Earsby School to meet all complex needs and a minor expansion, the completion of a new block and remodelling of existing facilities at Loud St Bernard's School to meet all complex needs and minor expansion, the merger of the Spalding Primary School and the Garth School to form the Tulip Academy, both the Waterside and Springview Campus, which I'll be referencing as we go through to talk about the work completed at the Waterside Campus. Completion of the new block and minor remodelling of existing facilities at the Waterside Campus, completion of the new school, Lincoln St Christopher's Primary School. I know that Kina is with us today, and that opened two pupils yesterday, which is very exciting and very hot up the press. Construction has commenced at the Lincoln St Christopher's Secondary site. Construction has also commenced on the rebuild of Horn Castle St Lawrence School. The self-delivery project by a community-inclusive trust, including the remodelling and new hydrotherapy pool for the Sandon site, is in construction with the agreement to develop the site next door for potential further expansion. Next door to the Ambergate site, that is the former Earl of Daisart site, and feasibility and design process has commenced for both Lincoln St Francis School and Gosburton House Academy. You'll note in the paper that there has been a minor delay for both the St Francis School and the Gosburton House Academy schemes, which related to procurement issues in relation to original construction companies providing feasibility that was above budget. So new contractors have been procured, and we are now back on track for both of those schemes in terms of design and building cost. I do have a brief slide deck to share with people. I don't know, Emily, if that's going to be possible, if I can share my screen, whether I need permissions, but it would be nice to be able to show the Forum progress so far, so I will have a go and hope that this works.
I think that you may have presented right, so give it a go, hopefully.
I hope I've shared the right thing. There we go. Nobody wants to see my teams. Let's try again. Is it doing its thing?
Oh, that's better.
The Forum can see that now, can they? Excellent. I'll go into slideshow. Super lovely. So where we are on the capital programme so far, as mentioned, completed schemes, we have Boston Endeavour, Bourne, Tulip Academy, Ambergate, Earsby, St Bernard's, and Lincoln St Christopher's Primary, put my teeth back in. Active are the Lincoln St Christopher's Secondary and Horn Castle St Lawrence and the Grantham-Sandon School, and in pre-construction, St Francis-Gosburton House and the Ambergate-Erl of Daisart scheme. So some of these you will have seen already, but I'll take you through the whole programme. I think it's lovely to see the whole programme together, to see all the work that's gone on across the county. So the new Boston Endeavour Academy, which opened in the last reporting period and has had its official opening in this period. We have the Grantham-Ambregate College and the Sandon School, so obviously reference the Ambergate expansion has been completed for a while, and Sandon's ongoing at the moment. I do have to apologise to Forum. I was at Sandon yesterday reviewing the progress and didn't take any photographs, so my apologies. Would it be nice for you to see how the pool's coming along there? Bourne Willoughby, again, has been open for a period of time now, and the pupils are really benefiting from the new resources and new facilities. The Earsby School has opened in this period, and again, is also new block and minor remodelling on the existing with an expansion for an additional twenty pupils. And again, pupils really benefiting from the fabulous resources. The last St Bernard's block, which has recently been handed over as well, and the pupils have moved into there, and again, benefiting from the facilities. We have the Spalding-Tulip Academy. I do have a time-lapse video, but I'm informed that they don't work very well on Teams, so I'm going to ensure that all members have access to the link by the end of this meeting, if that's all right, Emily, so that you can review the time-lapse video in your own time. It's quite interesting just watching the process of construction to see the end result. Lincoln St Christopher School, as I referenced, has just opened yesterday. Beautiful picture taken from one of the drones that the construction company have provided for us, and some pictures, as you can see there, of the pool and one of the classrooms. This scheme has been particularly exciting from a design perspective, because with it being a primary, we've been able to be a little bit more adventurous with our colour schemes. And if you've driven along Tritton Road, you'll see how nice and bright the colour schemes are. And then the live schemes, which left, I say my apologies, didn't take a picture of Sandon, but we have what the St Christopher's Secondary will look like, the entrance, and the Horn Castle St Lawrence, what the rebuild there will look like. And then remaining, we have the two designs for St Francis and Gosburton House. And if you look closely, you'll be able to notice on the St Francis, there's quite a significant amount of work being done to the car park area, and then lots of internal remodelling. And then with the Gosburton House, there is a full new block being built to meet the needs of children and young people with PD, PMLD. I hope that's been of interest to the Forum. I think it's probably just worth referencing a couple of other developments. So as the paper has highlighted, the capital programme remains subject to an element of risk due to the current economic and political environment experienced in the UK and globally. Whilst things are calming down, it is worth remembering that there is still a cost of living crisis and there is still that economic risk associated. However, as the programme progresses, you'll note that we've only got the three schemes left to enter into mainworks contract, so our risk element is reduced, and we are confident that the approved budget envelope will be sufficient. Budget envelope for the capital programme has been revised due to the confirmed DFE allocation funding, twenty-two to twenty-four, of sixteen point eight million, which provides sufficient funds to address the inflationary risk that the programme has been subject to, to enable us to complete the programme. This paper also provides an update on the revenue allocation for the programme as each school moves to the reorganisation phase of its implementation. As members will recall, the special schools reorganisation policy has been developed, replicating an existing mainstream policy to provide a fair and standardised level of funding during this transition period for schools that the LA wished to expand on a permanent basis, and this applies both to our maintained and our academy special schools. The Forum approved two million allocation from the DSG to support the implementation of this policy, and the funding has been allocated to fixtures and fittings for fifty-five new classroom spaces, new building space loose furniture for the installation of new sensory and soft playrooms, medical intervention spaces, physiotherapy spaces, and specialist teaching facilities, additional recruitment costs, moving and decant costs, funding where the increase in band funding for the additional five hundred and twenty-seven places and the impact that that will obviously have on the high-needs block, and the workforce development learning platform. At the end of twenty-two, twenty-three, a total of one point four four seven million had been transferred or committed from this allocation, and the financial projections indicate that the two million DSG allocation will be sufficient to meet the requirements of the school reorganisation policy. Within this allocation, it includes the commissioning of the SEND workforce development platform, which commenced on the tenth of February last year via Republic's Public Collaboration Agreement between Lincolnshire County Council and Lincolnshire Walts Federation as lead agency for the SEND Alliance. The workforce development learning platform induction phase launched in December 2022 for special schools and March of this year for mainstream schools. Tier one is due to go live to special schools from the fifteenth of May twenty-three, and for mainstream schools from the twelfth of June twenty-three, with tier through two following late summer. I'm hoping that everybody in the Forum has received their invitation to review and to take part in the SEND learning platform and to access the SEND learning platform. And I would assume they have, because since the launch, over fifteen hundred modules have been accessed, with ninety percent of special schools accessing the learning platform. Specialist community panels have been rolled out and are evidencing areas of successes keeping children and young people out of county provision and in their local mainstream, the local special schools. The health work stream continues to address the particularly challenging area of ensuring that our children and young people from Lincolnshire can access their local special school, even those who have the most complex medical needs. It is a particularly challenging area of work, both nationally and locally, but we are working with other local authorities who have successfully implemented this approach to ensure that we can move this forward. And finally, the specialist equipment contract, one year on, is evidencing substantial savings for special schools, both in supply of equipment and servicing of mainstream. So despite the ongoing challenges which have impacted the implementation of this multifaceted and complex strategy, good progress has been made, and the programme should be almost complete when I report back to you in a year's time. So thank you very much for your time today, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eileen. Very comprehensive and powerful, particularly bringing it to life with some of those images, so thank you very much. I can see we've got certainly one hand. Kina's been waiting very patiently, and she may have some first-hand insights to share with us, so please, would you like to go ahead? We can't actually hear Kina, sorry.
Can I speak, Chairman?
If you wouldn't mind just waiting one moment, please, Professor Durans, we'll just see if Kina can get her computer working. I tell you what, she's just plugging her headset in, so please go ahead, Professor Durans, and then we'll come back to Kina second.
Thank you very much.
Professor Durans, you're unfortunately now on mute.
Can you hear me now, Chairman?
We've got you now, thank you.
Thank you. May I first of all thank our inquiry report? And then ask her, when the programme, very important programme, is completed, how many new places altogether will we be providing? And at the same time, I assume, and I may be wrong, that we should be able to deal with most of our, or all of our high-needs children within house and not put them out of county. My last question of all is, is when everything has settled down, are we hoping to fund the new places from the high-needs budget? Will we be all right? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Professor Durans, absolutely. So it's an additional five hundred and twenty-seven places across the whole programme. And it is absolutely our aspiration that our special schools will be able to meet the needs of Lincolnshire children. There will always be a small proportion here will require more specialist intervention and a more specialist education placement. So one example of that would be our children who require to go to a school for the deaf, because the strategy decided not to replicate that in Lincolnshire. But there will always be a small number who require the specialist provision of an out-of-county. But we hope that the number of places that we have will have a significant impact on reducing our reliance on out-of-county. As for the funding, I see Mark's popped up, and I'm going to hand over to Mark to answer the question in relation to the high-needs block and the funding for the additional places.
Yeah, thank you very much. So in terms of, as Eileen said, in terms of the two million pounds that was earmarked within the DSG reserves to support that, so there's an element that supports the participation element of that through our banded funding. So through a temporary basis, it's funded through that route. In terms of the long-term position, the dedicated schools grant high-needs block formula actually picks up the pupil numbers, so place numbers, which we're funded on, of around, I think it's around four thousand six hundred mark. And then the additionality is managed within our overall high-needs block through the other proxy funding that we receive. It is an increase in costs. However, it is much more cost-effective, as obviously has been alluded to previously, in terms of the management of it rather than going out to out-of-county. So yes, it is an increased investment, both capital and revenue. We feel it is the right thing for the high-needs block, and that sustainability is there with that, based on the assumptions at this moment in time that we can meet need within those current arrangements, albeit growth is increasing, and it is a demand-led area as well. So that is something where trajectory planning in particular is really important over that medium term to be able to manage that. But clearly, it's sort of a watching brief on it in terms of how things progress. But at this moment in time, yeah, we're confident that those costs can be met within the current high-needs block. But also to note, the DFE funding has been welcomed. So for the current year, the five percent increase per head, and also the additional share of that two billion pounds that was announced by the Chancellor in autumn twenty-twenty-two, so that was a welcomed addition to the high-needs block to support our sustainability. But the funding going forward, so from twenty-four, twenty-five, that hasn't been announced yet, which is a key component to that future financial planning in terms of the quantum that we're working with. So clearly, there are uncertainties that lie ahead. But I think in terms of our proactiveness, we're doing everything we can to manage that. And I think the prudence and the caution that we've applied in the council's support to this overall programme is obviously significantly beneficial to not only those children, but also the sustainability of the high-needs block. Thank you.
Good. I thank Mark and Eileen, Chairman, and thank you very much.
Thank you all, and thank you also, Kina, for your patience. Would you like to come in?
Can you hear me now?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. Sorry for that. So firstly, apologies for being late. Secondly, I just wanted to say on behalf of St Christopher's that we are absolutely delighted with our primary school. It's been a pleasure to work with Eileen and the team. Not only have they helped us to fund and source the things that were necessary to make the building happen, but they've been part of the actual journey on the ground with the people working with us, so I just want to say thank you for that. We had our pupils on site yesterday for the first day. I've got some lovely photos, Eileen, that I will send forward to you. But we're very, very happy. Children are already feeling more settled than they've ever had. We are a live construction site on site B, but we look forward to getting this one complete as well. But I just wanted to say, it's been an amazing project, and we're very, very grateful, so thank you.
Thank you very much indeed, and I'm sure we would all share. It's wonderful to hear that young people are in and that it's a reality, Kina. So I'm sure you're feeling very well-rested. Anyway, we'll move on. Do any other members have further questions for Eileen or any of the officers present on this paper? Okay, if not, I'd just like to ask one briefly, if I may. It's referencing comments you've both made, Eileen and Mark, regarding sustainability and that forward trajectory. Are there, in terms of demand and sustainability, might we anticipate any future proposals, albeit not in the same scale as this transformation, to meet Lincolnshire's ongoing need for in-county provision? And that might be for either of you.
Absolutely. So I think it's a never say never, isn't it? I think we've provided the county with a really sound foundation for our special schools sector. However, there are forever increasing areas of demand. We are mindful of increasing demand around our SEMH cohort and the pressures that our SEMH schools are under, and that is an area that we will be reviewing and considering going forward as well, because obviously there is still a reliance on independent for our SEMH cohort. So I think it's definitely worth saying that that is an area of watching brief for the local authority.
Yeah, just to add, Josh as well. So obviously, the annual paper for SEND will be coming in the June meeting, so that will hopefully give a more broader position in terms of that SEND agenda in terms of growth. But yeah, we are not immune to a growth, unfortunately. We're facing similar growth levels to that of other local authorities. So yes, it's about how we manage that, and yes, we do have those trajectories, and we do monitor against those, but it is very demand-led, and as we see, there's certain pockets such as SEMH. Then there's the exclusions in terms of meeting needs there. So yeah, it is a continually changing picture, and it's about having that proactiveness to be able to respond to those sort of agendas in a timely and effective way, whilst also having the financial resource to support that. The green papers are received fundamental to high-needs sustainability as well, and again, we'll be sort of waiting for the overall outcomes of that. I think that is going to be quite fundamental. And clearly, we want to avoid going into a deficit position. And I think at this moment in time, we are in an okay position, but demands are there. So we're certainly not going to put the foot off the pedal really in terms of the transformation work and that future focus.
Thank you both. Before we move on then, any further questions from any members, please? If not, thank you all. Important to recognise, in the context of multi-multi-million pound deficits across many areas alongside provision that isn't necessarily meeting pupil need, I think we should all realise the value in the transformation programme that's been delivered over the last few years in Lincolnshire, really grasping that nettle early on in twenty eighteen, nineteen, in a way that is atypical within local government, I think is commendable, and we're beginning to see the fruits of some of that for children and young people. So I think we should be very proud of what's gone on in Lincolnshire. So the recommendation then for us as a forum is to review and comment on the content of this report and the progress made in Year Four of implementation. And secondly, to agree receipt of an update on Year Five of implementation, Eileen, in April 2024. Blink and we'll be there.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. So I propose we've done that, and can I ask, does anyone dissent? No, thank you. In which case then, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, where I'll be inviting Mark, I believe, to provide us with an Academies and Trust update at pages twenty-nine to thirty-two of your pack. Of you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So this is the periodic update for the Academy's agenda. So the position is at the first of April 2023 of the National Data Set. What we've seen is no change in terms of Academy conversions from that reported to the Forum in January. What we're seeing in terms of the first What we're seeing in terms of the first table is the position statement. So in terms of number of academies in Lincolnshire, that, that is 189, which represents 52.1% of overall schools. In terms of pupil numbers, that represents 79,000 pupil numbers, which are a greater proportion of pupils in academy schools. So that represents just under 73%. In terms of the forward look over the next six months, what we've seen is there's four schools that have been identified as requiring conversion to sponsored academy status, having been judged as requiring improvement on two successive inspections under that coasting arrangement. At this moment in time, no sponsors have been identified. However, that, that will be worked on over the coming months. So the second table is exactly what the first table is. So no, no, no change on, on that at the moment. Then moving on to page 31, you'll see there in terms of the number of academy trusts with their, with the number of schools that they have and the, the overall pupil numbers for relating to Lincolnshire, Lincolnshire academies. There are 50, there are, sorry, 35 active multi-academy trusts operating within Lincolnshire and a total of 152 Lincolnshire academies that are members of multi-academy trusts as well. And we've got 37 Lincolnshire academies, our single academy trusts, and are not members of multi-academy trusts as, as part of that arrangement as well. And we've got eight multi-academy trusts and that just have one Lincolnshire, Lincolnshire academy as a member. In terms of, from a, a national, so for those national trusts within Lincolnshire, and this list gives an illustration of, of Lincolnshire schools within those national trusts. So Academies Enterprise Trust, there's, there's two Lincolnshire schools of the overall 57 within that, within that trust. So hopefully all that, that just gives an overall summary of that position. Nothing significant to, to note as part of this. And, and yes, Lincolnshire, obviously County Council will continue to support, maintain schools in, 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 in how they do now. So yes, over, over to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mark, for that verbal summary. Very much appreciated. Can I ask, do any members have any questions regards to this paper? Catherine, please come in.
Hi, I'd just like to ask the local authority, and I'm sure there is, what risk assessments are in place for our remaining maintained schools, both from a financial perspective and a support system perspective? As the, interesting to see, there's not been a change, but you know, I'm sure more change will come. And at what point is that sliding scale going to be negatively possibly impacting on the remaining maintained schools? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark, you happy to respond first?
Yeah, happy to respond first and then, and then Martin can then come in. So from a, from a funding perspective, maintained schools funded exactly the same way as academy schools. I think that firstly needs to be referred to. Yes, there is, in terms of that support network, the, the funding for local authorities to support maintained schools was ended. So there was consultation, 50% of it was funded last year and this year is subsequently ended as part of the solution and in the council's budget. We've been able to maintain budget whilst also using de-delegation funding. So recycling that which was then, which was then shared and supported at Schools Forum in the October of 2022. So providing that same level of provision and in fact recycling it and actually probably feeling that it's actually going to deliver a better value because it's, it's, it's more locality leads on the ground to, to support maintained schools. And so we will continue operating that. It is a de-delegation charge to those schools. And clearly there will be a point where the, the certain thresholds will need to be assessed, Catherine. That's the reality if the numbers do reduce. But at this moment in time, what we've seen is, is the number of maintained schools being fairly steady. We've seen minimal conversions over the last few years. So therefore that has provided stability from a local authority perspective. But from a local authority view and members' view, schools are significantly important. It's one of our big priority, big, we consider is one of our key core objectives. And so as long as maintained schools are here, the council will be there for them in whatever service that we can provide. So from a financial perspective, at this moment in time, there, we consider that that can be adaptable to that change. So if the de-delegation reduces, clearly we will adapt to that change, but that support will still be there. And there'll be less schools to support. So from a financial perspective, we feel that is manageable at the moment. And the council have supported the 2023/24 budget solutions, which is, which for us was a, a good outcome. And, and obviously supports the, the council's core corporate plan as well. So I'll hand over to Martin in terms of the operations side.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark, for, for that update. And Catherine, a really good question. So I think what I would say to you is all things within the, the education space as a local authority, we are keeping under constant review. We have to, due to the different ways in which different duties and responsibilities are reduced and announced for the local authority to do. And some of those new duties, such as the attendance duty, kind of reinforces the importance of having some central team to be able to engage with schools for different activities. But by its virtue, that also supports being able to maintain that coherent offer with partners for our maintained schools. And as Mark pointed out, there will be a, a critical tipping point. But certainly the trajectory at this moment in time is, you know, it doesn't seem to be getting to that point very quickly. It's clearly up to head teachers and governing bodies to decide on the next steps of their school and whether to join a trust or not. But as we currently see things, there should be the ability to continue to support maintained schools directly through the strategy of school improvement for the foreseeable. So hopefully that gives you some reassurance and answers your, your questions. But I know as a school leader, you appreciate it's a shifting scope and feast. And we don't know what the next announcement might, may well be. For the purposes of Schools Forum, I will say that over the Easter break, the Statement of Requirements was published, which outlined the plans with a bit more detail around the ambition for academisation in the different local authority areas. That may see an increase in the rate of academisation, but I'm certainly not anticipating that all accelerate much more than it already has done. But thank you, Chair. Thanks, Mark, and thanks Catherine for the question.
At the risk of sounding like I'm trying to have the final word, I will just say that I am proud and am very proud of being a maintained head teacher. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you, Catherine. Do any of the members have any other questions on this paper? If not, just one observation from me prompted, prompted by Catherine really in that from a, from my experience, the, the dynamic, not wanting to make any political statement, the dynamic in Lincolnshire around prioritising Lincolnshire's children, young people and to, to behave in a manner somewhat agnostic of maintained or academy is really powerful. And the collaborative networks, in my experience, are really focused on that. And again, that's not typical elsewhere. So wherever you are educated, you get the best deal possible. And, and I think maybe that static nature is testament to that to some degree, Martin and Mark. I don't think I've made a political statement there. So I'm going to move on swiftly before I spoil myself. Finally then, agenda item six, Lincolnshire Schools Forum Work Programme at pages 33 to 34. And, and my point here is simply to ask if members agree to note the report, whether there's any dissent or other comments. I'm not seeing anything, Emily, unless you are.
No, I can't see anything, Joan.
Okay then. In which case, swiftly, that now concludes the business of today's meeting. It remains to thank everyone for their attendance and please feel free to leave at your leisure via the big red button in the top right. We'll see you all next time.